I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, members present this evening are myself, Mayor Morrow, councilmembers Gearbox, Seibokanik, Rhodes, Roth, Tahar, and Dillon; city staff, we have city manager Campbell, clerk Royal; city treasurer Bennett is not with us tonight, nor is police chief Rennick; DPW director Fordice is here, as well as PCF superintendent Skoll. You do have a revised agenda in front of you, I can note the additions, they're pretty innocuous. The first comes at the end of the consent agenda, it's C-15-188, the appointment of Ms. Cameron to the Arts and Culture Committee. I believe we have added 207 Monroe Street as the last discussion item this evening, and I would like to add one more, which is odor issues at the wastewater treatment plant. So those are the changes from the agenda that was delivered at your homes late last week. If there are no additions, no additions in addition to those, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved?
Thank you, Councilwoman Seibokanik, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilmember Gearbox. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we will dispense with that. We come to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person, anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? There are no citizen comments, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, however, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Moved to approve as submitted.
Thank you, Ms. Tahar, seconded by councilmember Rhodes. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 15-185, community event scarecrow contest. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memos from police chief Rennick and DPW director Fordice, and to approve or not to approve the scarecrow contest community event.
Moved to acknowledge receipt and to approve.
Thank you, councilmember Gearbox, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilwoman Tahar. The memos pretty much speak for themselves, police chief Rennick is not here. Mr. Fordice, I assume you don't have any additional comments this evening? Are there any questions for city staff? Mr. Gearbox, please.
What's the time period for removal of those? I'm trying to remember, last year, they seemed like they were kind of, are they staying up until Thanksgiving, or are they coming up down a week after Chris, after, I'm sorry, after Halloween? We might want to just clarify a date.
I don't know if that was in their application.
I don't think it was.
I didn't see it.
I entered one last year, and I know that they give you a date that they have to be removed by.
In their actual application?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted clarification when that was happening.
Anything further, Mr. Gearbox?
Nope.
Any additional questions? Any subsequent discussion? No, that has been properly moved by Gearbox, seconded by Tahar, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Move on to new business item 15-186, this is master plan update. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memos from Parks and Rec director Scruggs, city superintendent engineer Rubel, and DPW director Fordice, and to approve or not to approve the master plan update proposal from Carla Wartman in an amount not to exceed $24,490. Is there a motion?
Moved to acknowledge receipt and approve.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilwoman Dillon. Mr. Campbell, do you care to comment on this?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Jeff, if I miss anything, feel free to jump in. Just as we did approximately five years ago or so, plus or minus, we combined, well, let me back up. So every five years, we need to renew a couple of things. We need to renew the rec plan, so we're eligible for certain grants, specifically the Natural Resources Trust Fund grant, if we were to wanting to apply for projects for that. We also need to, by statute, need to update our master plan every five years now. And so, we did a fairly detailed update that was adopted November of 2011 for the master plan, and so 2016, of course, would be, in November, would be the deadline to do an update, and this update's not going to be as consuming, but still important nonetheless. Then, of course, also for our complete streets ordinance, we have a, in conjunction with that, we have a non-motorized master plan, non-motorized pathway master plan, and that's needing to be updated as well. So, staff proposed to Carla Wartman, who helped us with this five years ago, to do all three of them together, and that helps with community involvement as well, because sometimes you have three different groups of people that want to comment and be part of, so, and also there's an economy of scale, if you will, to be more efficient with people's time. So, as you can see from the individual memos, one from Carla Scruggs for the Parks and Rec, the non-motorized plan from Jeff Fordice, and then Gay Rubel for the master plan. Originally, when these discussions first took place earlier this year, it was in the past fiscal year, fiscal year 15, so there were dollars in there, but again, we didn't really do anything, or we didn't do anything, and so, needing to, obviously, they exceed the current budget numbers, as it's reflected in the memos, but we would propose move forward with this proposal from Carla Wartman to award this project, so staff can begin to work with them on it.
Thank you, city manager. Are there any questions for our city manager, or any department heads? Mr. Gearbox, please.
I just remembered that someone had mentioned about the Salt Spring Trail and everything. Will that be part of this non-motorized transportation plan?
Right, as we basically review of what is on there currently, any improvements or updates, things that maybe weren't even thought of then, five years ago, and so, yes, those will be included.
We received an email from Mr. Peters requesting that, so that's good to know. Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else, Mr. Gearbox?
Nope.
Additional questions for staff? Any subsequent discussion? Okay, it's been properly moved by Mayor Protem Rhodes, seconded by Dillon, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Move on to new business, we're moving on, excuse me, to new business item 15-186, this is A-7, this is a series of two motions, the purchase of a dump truck. Motion A is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 4th, 2015 memo from DPW director Fordice, and to authorize or not authorize the purchase of a 2016 Freightliner single axle heavy-duty truck chassis from Wolverine Freight Line, Eastside Incorporated, in the amount of $88,000, $78,000.
Moved to authorize.
Second.
Moved by Mayor Protem Rhodes to authorize, seconded by councilmember Gearbox. You know, your memo, DPW director Fordice, was pretty direct, but do you care to make any additional comments this evening?
Yes, I'd like to point out an error in my memo.
Well, I said direct, maybe not accurate.
The price for the upfitting, the dump body, and the plows, et cetera, that should actually be $86,441.
So the number is wrong?
Yeah.
Say that number one more time.
$86,441.
That's for the second part of the motion?
The second motion, yeah.
The second motion.
Went down, that's good.
Yeah, that's the right direction.
Anything else, Mr. Fordice?
That's the only correction.
All right, I'll open it up for comments, then. Any comments for DPW director Fordice? Councilmember Roth, please.
Are we adding this as an addition, or are we keeping a truck that we've got?
At the moment, I'm planning this as an addition to the fleet, however, that 32-year-old chipper truck is, when that one goes, it's, that one's done, because we can't get parts for it anymore.
So there's some life in it.
There's still some life in it, it's still useful as a chipper truck, yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Roth. Any additional questions for our DPW director? Mr. Gearbox.
Jeff, what kind of reimbursement do we get from the state in terms of Michigan Avenue?
We have an annual budget for maintenance on Michigan Avenue that's roughly $32,000 a year, and about half of that is snow clearing.
And how do we, and we get reimbursed from them for that, or?
Yes, yeah, we track our time and material usage on Michigan Avenue and bill them.
Okay, so it's really, it's based on what our actual costs are?
Yeah.
Got it, thank you.
Additional questions? Any subsequent discussion? No, that has been properly moved by Mayor Protem Rhodes, seconded by councilmember Gearbox to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Motion B will be a motion to authorize or not authorize the purchase of a dump, a dump body, plows, controls, salt spreader, and other equipment from Trucks and Trailers Specialties Incorporated, in the changed amount of $86,441.
Moved to authorize.
Thank you, councilmember Gearbox, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Tahar, I'll get you on the next one, councilwoman Dillon. And I read that number correctly.
$86,441.
Beautiful, okay, please note the change. Do you care to make any comment on this agenda item, Mr. Fordice?
Just, you know, the basic need to expand our snow plowing capabilities. We'd need to upgrade the equipment a little bit, increase the reliability, and this setup will have much greater capacity, so we should be able to clear faster.
Any questions for our DPW director?
Any other questions or a comment?
Please.
I just want to say, as I assume most of the rest of the council members are, this is approved, that we're really pleased to continue to provide the equipment to DPW to maintain our streets and do an excellent job of snow plowing in the wintertime. People who come here from Ann Arbor are amazed at the quantity of our snow removal.
Yeah, thank you. The crew, really, they take a great deal of pride in the snow clearing efforts.
Very good. Mr. Campbell, please.
Thank you, if I may, Mr. Mayor, just to, again, along that avenue of, again, continue to look at the technology, and again, we're not looking at a whole fleet of these, but again, with adding the wing and the pre-wet system for the salt, it's just that much more that we can be more efficient, so we can move along, get things done quicker, and so we can get on to other things as well. I mean, it's, one truck's not gonna, I mean, it is gonna help, but it's just going, from my perspective, going in the right direction to be more efficient with the tax dollars and our resources that we get to move forward.
Anything further? No? All right, that has been properly moved by councilmember Gearbox, seconded by councilwoman Tahar to authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to the discussion portion of our agenda this evening, first up is commission, committee, and task force reports from council members. Ms. Rhodes.
The Parks Commission met last week, and we spent most of our meeting looking at photographs of landscaping within the community that had been nominated for the Green Thumb Award, and we did, of course, select our awardees, which you're not going to hear about tonight, but you will at some future meeting, probably our next one, I suppose. Had some great entries. The Environmental Commission had co-sponsored with the county the cleanup this last Saturday, and in spite of the not-so-nice weather in the morning, there were 450 vehicles who came through the gate and dropped off things that we might otherwise have found in the landfill or alongside the road. It was a bit more than what we had last year. And then, the mailings have started out to our residents for the Simple Recycling Program, which starts on September 28th. Some folks got this larger flyer and the green bags, where you're supposed to put things in, and some just got a postcard saying that it's coming. So, those are, you've got two of these bags, you put your recyclables that are textile-related in here, put it out beside your recycling container on those days that you're scheduled for pickup, and they will pick this up and leave another bag along with you. So, it's a good program, will help recycle materials, help us all be kinder, better stewards of our environment, and there's some small amount of funds that come back to the sea for that. So it's a good program.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Additional committee, commission, or task force reports, Mr. Gearbox.
Just a question for Mr. Rhodes, on, does this go out with the trash at the same time, the same pickup day, or?
Goes out with the recycle.
Recycle, and that, that's why I would be sure.
Yeah, recycle cycle.
Okay. Thank you.
If there are no additional, yeah, if there are no additional committee, commission, or task force reports, we move on to reports and other announcements. Ms. Seibokanik?
I have some announcements from the Celine Chamber of Commerce. The first is that the Business Enterprise Awards recipients for 2015 have been selected, and our Small Business of the Year for 2015 will be Steve's Custom Signs, and the Large Business of the Year is Dan's Downtown Tavern. We host a dinner and award ceremony on Thursday, October 22nd, at Stonebridge Golf Course, and it, tickets can be reserved through the Chamber office at 429-4494, or on the Chamber website at selenechamber.org. Couple of other notes, it is only September, but we are already thinking about the Christmas Parade. This is when we go into our very busy season, and the Christmas Parade applications to participate will be on the Chamber website, I'm hoping on Monday, so we'll be looking forward to applications for floats and entertainment entries. We also have for our profit businesses in the Celine area, something called the Santa's Cup, which is a prize competition for floats, we're looking forward to that. The last note, business for the Celine Chamber, is that the executive director, Art Trapp, has submitted his resignation, and we have formed a selection, a search and selection committee, and that committee will be looking for his replacement. He will be in the office until December.
Very good.
Okay?
Thank you, councilwoman. Additional reports or announcements, Mr. Gearbox?
Since we won't be meeting before the next meeting, again, I'd like to remind everyone that Harvest Fest will be happening out at the Rensler Farm on October 4th, from 12 to 5:00, and this year, we're gonna have a blacksmith again, and different crafts, so we hope that everyone can come out before the close for the, oh, here, thanks, Davey. The Celine area players will be there doing a show at 1:00, and then one at 3:30, and then the Celine fiddlers will be out there at 2:00, so there will be a lot of individuals and things going on, so we hope to see you out there.
Very good. I just wanted to state very briefly, and most of you at the DAS actually attended, but last Wednesday, we had a very successful luncheon and forum at Weller's with the businesses on our western border. I think it was a good conversation, a good dialogue, excellent brainstorming, quite frankly, and I'm gonna be meeting with staff and a few other stakeholders in the next few weeks to talk about some next steps, but I hope to reconvene that group again sometime before the end of the year to talk more about strategies and approaches that can improve the viability of that area of commerce. So, again, it was a very productive meeting, and I appreciate those of you on the DAS who were able to attend. Any other reports or announcements? No? Okay.
Brian?
Yes?
Oktoberfest.
Oh, yes. You wanna mention Oktoberfest? So in addition to the events at Rensler Farm this weekend?
Oktoberfest will be held on October 25th and 6th in downtown Celine, September, I'm sorry, September, sorry. 25th and 26th, this coming Friday and Saturday, and that is hosted by Celine Main Street, it's always fun. 50 Amp Fuse is playing, is that Friday night?
Yes.
Thank you, Friday night, and there's a small cover for that evening, but we'll have German music, and food, and entertainment, and Kinder Plots, kids' activities on Saturday. That's always a good thing.
Very good. If there are no additional reports or announcements, we move on to the community event policy. As you recall from the last meeting, we did have an agenda item in which ultimately, council approved the Chad Tough Fun Run without waiving the fees, and there were some questions and concerns that were brought up, and you correct me if I'm wrong, clerk Royal, but our city clerk made almost immediate contact with our legal counsel, specifically Nick Curcio from Dickinson Wright, and relayed some of our questions and concerns. Nick is actually in the process of formalizing a report that will be submitted for council to review. I had hoped that it would be available by tonight's meeting, but it will be available by our next meeting, and if I'm not mistaken, Nick will also be here at that meeting.
Yeah, Nick or Scott.
Nick or Scott, somebody from our legal team will be here to discuss further, so just wanted to make note of that and indicate, of course, that this item will be returning as a discussion item at our next meeting on October the 5th. If there's nothing further on that, 207 Monroe Street, let me preface by saying it would not be prudent, helpful, or appropriate to have council engage in a sales negotiation discussion tonight, but I do want to give you all an update, and of course, Mr. Campbell, if you want to chime in, I would welcome that. The proposed sale of 207 Monroe Street is progressing and progressing nicely, there is broad consensus on the sales agreement. One issue that currently has yet to be resolved is some verbiage that would require the builder to develop the property in a certain period of time. I believe that it's something that can be rectified and resolved, and I'm convinced that we can find common ground, and I also want to move expeditiously and get this sales agreement approved. So after speaking with staff, and actually, this was Mr. Campbell's suggestion, I think what would be most prudent at this juncture would be to have staff, with the assistance of a few council members, take a look at the verbiage, the language that is currently in the sales agreement, make some changes, and then forward that to the proposed buyer. That is the process that I think would be best, with the goal being that we would have something to digest and consider at our next meeting on October the 5th. So I did have a brief conversation with Mayor Protem Rhodes about this in advance of tonight's meeting, I think he would be willing to serve as one of the council members on that work group. Unfortunately, my schedule does not permit me to participate, but I would seek an additional volunteer if somebody was interested. There's kind of a twinkle in your eye, I don't know if that, no, I'm referring to Mr. Gearbox.
Looking at me? That's fine.
Okay.
I can work it in.
Again, I don't suspect many meetings, probably just one, quite frankly, and again, the goal would be to get something tangible for us to consider at our next meeting on October the 5th.
Fine.
And it could even be a conference call, too, to help.
Oh, that'd work, that's fine.
Make it easier for folks, yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate that. All right. If there's nothing further on that, again, expect that that issue will come back, and hopefully, we'll approve something within the next month. The final issue or item on the discussion agenda this evening is wastewater treatment plant odor issues. I know that some of you have spoken to me in recent weeks about some ongoing odor issues. I have noticed some odor issues. Mr. Skoll, our city manager, and I have also received a number of emails from a concerned party whose property abuts the wastewater treatment plant. I didn't want to act too, with too much haste on these issues, thinking that they may be isolated, the flare-ups, for lack of a better way to articulate it, could have been isolated, but it seems to be a perpetual issue at this point. Now, obviously, as everyone knows, there's a lot of substantial work that's being done at the plant, which hopefully will rectify and mitigate some of these issues. Bob, I appreciate you being here this evening. The one thing, I would like some clarification on, is the carbon filters are going to be worked on, and it would be my understanding that once that work is completed, that may resolve some of our issues. Is that incorrect?
No, that is correct, that is part of Phase Two, and I appreciate the opportunity to come up here and talk about this, because it has been more of an ongoing issue. We've taken several steps to mitigate as best we can with the equipment we have. We also have several trees on order to help screen and hopefully act as a windbreak for some of the more problematic neighbors. The Phase Two also has money put away for tightening the existing odor scrubber, so hopefully that'll help, as well as the carbon filter, which will go in approximately February on the odor scrubber. My hope is, and I can't stand here and say there'll never be an odor, but I'm hoping that after Phase Two is complete, with the plant running more efficiently, with all the equipment back online, it should run more efficiently and hopefully with less odor. We did have, I did get an estimate for a comprehensive odor study with Tetra Tech, and I know this has been addressed before, but it's anywhere between $40,000 to $100,000 for the study, and the implementation of the actual work would probably be closer to $1 to $3 million to expand the existing odor scrubber to cover every aspect of the plant. I don't, I don't know if most people realize, but the existing odor control only controls the odor in the preliminary treatment and the biological treatment. The actual influence building has not, and has never been part of the odor abatement work, and we, I did ask for a quick quote on a canister to add to that building, and that was, that would be between $10,000 and $20,000. But Tetra Tech's recommendation is that they pipe that directly to the existing scrubber, which would start at $50,000, and it would probably be more, because the odor scrubber was not sized for that additional volume. And with the expansion of the plant, or possible movement of the plant due to the growth on the west side, I don't know how much, in the long term, how much money we'd want to spend.
Well, let me say this, Mr. Skoll, and I should have prefaced by saying that I know that you and your subordinates, your staff at our wastewater treatment plant, take these issues very seriously, and I know you've been very attentive and tried your best to accommodate the questions and concerns that you have received, and I appreciate that. I think, and council has discussed this in the past, I think it would be inappropriate to engage in a comprehensive, to engage a comprehensive odor study at this juncture, considering that the Phase Two projects have yet to be completed.
I agree. I just wanted to bring everything to the table.
Right, and so you threw out specifically relating to the carbon filters, that the estimate currently is that that would be completed sometime in February?
Yes, it requires a change order, because it wasn't directly in the Phase Two, that was, that came along after we had the inspection with Tetra Tech and their odor experts.
Okay. Do we have an idea as to when that additional landscaping will be installed?
They're ordered, they've been, the Miss Dig has staked everything, it should be any day. I've met with the homeowner, and they agree on the location. We looked for something that would provide maximum screening and, but also allow us to maintain the grounds.
Okay. Well, let me just say this, in conclusion, when I contacted and spoke to city manager Campbell about this issue yesterday afternoon, one of the things that I think we should still consider, and, you know, I'm not a technical expert, Bob, that's why the city hires people like you, but if there were small steps that we could take in this finite period between now and when Phase Two is completed, that may reduce or mitigate some of the odor issues, I think that would be ideal.
We've already started that.
Okay.
I've spent approximately $3,000 in the last six weeks to get mats to cover up any potential leaks, to tighten up the system, so it has to move less air, as well as chemical odor blocks for problem areas. So we are taking steps all the time.
Okay. Let me then end by saying this, and I mentioned this to city manager Campbell prior to tonight's meeting, I assume it would be helpful in the event that individual council members notice odor issues, to relay that information to you and to the city manager.
Yes, that, yeah, and preferably with weather conditions as well. There has been a slight chemical odor coming from the site across the street during the cleanup, that's very noticeable. Has nothing to do with the wastewater plant, or the odor that people have been complaining about, but it is present.
Okay. Are there any questions for our PCS superintendent, Mr. Gearbox?
You'd mentioned a couple of times that you thought there's sometimes something coming through the system that wipes out bacteria, or something that potentially, is there any way for us, and I know it would cost us, but to test where the, where it's coming in from any of our systems, to determine if maybe one of our, whoever's trying to put something through, that we can catch that before it goes through?
There is a way, but it's not extremely efficient, because usually, the deed is done before you realize anything's wrong, and then it takes weeks to, if it was just a simple slug that somebody put something down, they shouldn't have down the drain, gasoline, something, I don't know, whatever, it would affect the plant immediately, we would not, and we would see it the next day that something was wrong, but by that time, whatever had passed through, could pass through, and we do have a program to test the main trunk lines.
Have, we just been noticing that more often? Have, um, we just been noticing it more often lately, or?
You know, I, I think more, I think more of the problem is the fact that the, our, a lot of the RBCs are having mechanical issues that are gonna be addressed by this new phase. We're losing a lot of, of, of treatment service when these things aren't turning. And, uh, again, that's why it's addressed in Phase Two.
It's the issue of breakdown of our current system, and it's out of its...
I think it works fine under normal circumstances, but if something comes through, it takes much longer to recover.
Got it.
Yes, activated sludge plants, there's different design plants that rec, recuperate quicker than what we have. We have an older system, it's kind of antiquated, and it takes a while for it to recover.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Skoll? Councilmember Roth?
The receiving station, is that going to be moved to the, let's say, the west side instead of the north side?
It's going to be moved, but, ah, not very far to the west of the existing structure.
Just around the corner.
The existing structure is gonna be removed. I'm sorry?
Is it gonna be just around the corner, then?
Well, it's not even around the corner, it's sort of like, the septic receive station's here, the new one's here. I mean, it's, it's not very far, we simply don't have that much land to work with. We have to keep the cost down by keeping as close to the treatment process as we can. If we relocated at a far end of the structure, then we would have to pay to have it piped and pumped to the treatment portion of the plant. But it does have, it's going to have a positive air system in there, so it shouldn't, and, it shouldn't admit any odor. We have a very limited hours in which, uh, we receive septic, because we are conscious of the neighbors.
And where they fit, when, in that particular building now, you filter out the large clumps, it's not gonna go through.
Correct.
It's, it ends up being covered with raw sewage. How are you gonna handle that odor?
That's gonna, it's gonna be in a dumpster within the building, and it'll be, it'll be emptied weekly. And it should be, the new, according to the new system, which, you can't believe everything you read, but it's supposed to be much drier and, and therefore less odor than, than our current system, which is kind of wore out, and it can't compress the material like it needs to.
Anything further, Councilmember?
That's it.
Thank you, sir.
I, I do have another question for us, I should have brought this up at our last meeting, when our, Mr. Rubel was here, that I had made a, asked a question about when the fence could be put up, or is scheduled to be put up in Phase Two, and he mentioned June. Is there any possibility that could be done earlier, so they can have more activity with the Salt Springs Park? Could we, as city, ask for that, to be moved forward?
I can certainly ask for it, yes.
Please.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Reference that, um, part of, um, the city council's strategic plan was to, um, put together plans to begin to further develop that park, um, and that's, and Mr. Rubel mentioned that, uh, last week, uh, about, um, staff working over the winter, and, as well as with, with the assistance of, of Mr. Peters, to help come up with a development plan, uh, probably phased, but, but where, you know, where pathways are gonna go and those sort of things, so we can begin, uh, further development of, of that, um, uh, of that park. And so, I, I mean, it's not gonna be ready, um, from my perspect, from staff's perspective, to, to promote the use, um, until, you know, this summer or later. Once we have that, over the winter, we have this development plan put together of how we're gonna, how best to develop that, uh, that, that park. So that's, so I would suggest that, um, most certainly, staff is happy to, to talk with the contractor. I don't know that, it, that there's a, a need for it, because we won't, the park won't be ready to move forward at that point, so.
And there may be, uh, I didn't mean to interrupt, but there may be an issue with, um, of storing of the material for the renovations, but I, I can certainly ask if that's...
The reason I brought this up is because I was contacted by some of the people promoting that particular park, and saying that was one of the big hangups, not having that fence. So that's the reason I brought it up a second time.
And they, and they're really going to town down there, I mean, they're really doing a lot of work, as far as archeology, they...
Sure.
I don't see any objection, I mean.
No.
If somebody wants to ask about the fence, let's ask about the fence.
Mr. Gearbaugh?
I just, my concern is I don't want to see any shift in costs or additional costs as a result of changing that out of the sequence. Um, I, I agree with when we can get to the park, but I think the park needs some planting first, and then the issue is that we shouldn't be shifting costs onto the waste treatment plant to put that fence in.
Anything else on this odor issue? Well, Bob, I, I think we're all on the same page in the sense that we take these, these issues seriously, we want to see them resolved. You know, keep us in, in, in the loop, and what I would ask and charge my colleagues on council is, if there are days when you notice particular odors, um, please note the date and the time, and, and get that information to our, our city manager.
And if there is anything that comes up that may affect the operational plan, I, I always let Todd know directly, and I'm sure he filters the information out to you guys. And I appreciate the opportunity, because I know it's been on people's minds, especially mine.
Thank you for being here. Thanks, Bob. Any other discussion items? No, then we move on to public comments. Uh, under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person, anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. There are no citizen comments, then, uh, please note that we have upcoming meetings on the fifth and the nineteenth, work meetings at both, um, a work meeting at six P.M. on the fifth to discuss Michigan Avenue makeover, and then a work meeting on the, um, nineteenth at six-thirty to discuss community events. Is there any other business to be brought before city council this evening? Mr. Gearbaugh?
Mayor, um, Ms. Seibokanik mentioned that we have our meeting on the twenty-fourth to discuss, um, Michigan Avenue at the Liberty School at five-thirty?
Five-thirty.
So that's this Thursday, um, obviously, would, would like everyone to attend, and those, uh, our friends from the media, what, what you can do to help us promote that. Obviously, I think you can make it an evening and stay for the candidate's forum afterwards, that is being hosted and organized by the Celine Post. And again, that's the twenty-fourth at...
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty to seven-thirty.
Five-thirty to seven-thirty.
It's on the, uh, message sign at M.D.O.T. put up.
Oh, great. Great. And I, we should probably message on that one more time through social media.
Sure, we can do that, and also, I, I'd like, uh, some of the local businesses are, they have it in areas, some of the local retailers and such, that, that they have the notice and, and what it's about, and so that's a good, that's a good thing.
Good, okay. If there's nothing further, uh, again, there are no absences, so we can dispense with that motion. So the chairman seeks a motion to adjourn at eight oh nine P.M.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Gearbaugh, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Meeting is adjourned.
Eight oh nine.
It's pretty early for us.
Where can you guys go?